Uh.
The buh.
Where's the? Good, where's I?
I is way.
Good. Yeah, where's like?
Like, uh, like.
Uh, where's I?
Oh my god! Sorry, that.
Me. Way.
That's my. Don't start guessing. M, E, muh. M, see the N? M. E, me.
Wait, do you want to point at the one that had the first line on it?
What, yeah, m, m, me.
M, E.
M, me.
M, E, me.
Good, M E is me. So point to I.
I, oh.
Good.
What's up, boo?
Knee.
Mia.
Not Mia, me. Good. Like.
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 Like?
Where's like?
Please tell me it's right here.
Nope, that's mine. La, like.
La. La. Okay. Now, are you making up?
Yep.
Oh, no, you're making me up.
Ready? Point to I. Good, like.
Like.
La, la, l, like, good. Alright, I gotta go put dogs out. Come on, Bob. Go on, I'm gonna make it back and back. I want you to take your bag, empty anything that's in your locker.
Yes. It's gonna be gonna long. And through the night. Mommy. Um, if Mama Papa can get a place by, um, open the door if they come here.
Yeah, I don't think the dogs must go out. I think it was just Bob wanting to eat. But you can go check to see if they're there.
Yeah, she's trying to get kicked out.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Education meeting. You all, please stand and turn your question to the class. The United States of America, and to recover this one nation. Thank you. We begin the meeting with a couple of presentations. Uh, first, we have the, uh, community bus outside, and we're gonna take a few minutes and, uh, go outside and sort of look at it, uh, get certain questions to play out among our guests. It's just recently finished, as you gather. Yes, there's, um, thanks, Mr. Manix. There's a lot of people that thank for this endeavor. Um, but for today, Mr. Luther here is gonna do a brief presentation when we get out there for the Board of Education. See, it won't take us more than a few minutes. Just going to go through the bus, check it out. It's meant to be set up around the community. It's meant to be set up on campus.
Recording in progress.
It's about exploring. It has STEM activities sometimes. You can have literacy activities. Our kindness plaza can be on it and offers, um, quotes for our students, and we also will be setting up out in the community. Jenkinsville and different areas where you'll see the bus throughout the years. It's just, uh, it's been a long, a year and a half long project, and it's finally complete, and we're really, really excited about it. So we'd ask that to join us outside for a quick brief presentation. We'll be right back.
What happened to the meeting?
I don't know. Hold on. You still gotta hit it on the phone.
I'm just gonna get out. I'm just gonna get out. Cause I, I didn't write.
Okay, here.
Usually your name doesn't show up. I'm getting out.
Recording.
I want to please. You go.
Installing an LED banner in the cafeteria at the middle school. So when there's a lockdown, as we all know, cafeterias get pretty loud. So when there's a lockdown, that LED, you see the banner on the bottom, now it'll announce lockdown. We'll have some strobes, those three lights in the middle will flash, and it'll be yellow, lockdown. So that's what we're doing in the middle school. Some things that we also have been working on, put together a safety survey. So it's about fifteen questions. We're gonna put that out to the Barton Intermediate School, just to get everybody's input. Do you feel safe? Do you feel there's enough camera coverage? Do you understand that there's lockdown procedures in place? Do you know how to exit the building? Questions like that. So that is gonna be going out in the next couple of months. Hopefully get some results on that, and then our safety committee can take it and run with that of any concerns or issues that need to be addressed. We also did a few, a couple of safety audits with Needham. We went and we walked all the art rooms, just to make sure all the kilns are running properly. They're not doing any type of poisonous type of paints or any of that good stuff to make sure that they're all in compliance. And we also walked all the technology rooms, shoprooms, et cetera, to make sure all the equipment was fastened correctly. Uh, wasn't moving, um, you know, enough outlets, things like that. So we worked on a few safety audits. Uh, most of that we've closed out, but Needham is helping us close out the remaining items. Okay, so this one, very proud of this one. So we're in the process of putting together building maps with the emergency components. So this is the elementary school. So in there, you will have, I want to put this in every single classroom. So you can see we have pole stations, we have fire extinguishers, and we have AEDs all marked out. And then we also have the colors. You see the red, the green, and the yellow. So those are corridors to be used in severe weather. So basically, there's a legend on the side, so the red, we avoid sheltering in there. This green is the safest, yellow is the safe. So God forbid, there's a something that we need to shelter in place, we would all go to the yellow or the green. And then those other components, well, this is basically about the teacher, the students know where the nearest pole station is. So these are all done for every single building. So they're gonna be starting to be laminated, and we, uh, starting to be put up soon. Door emergency contacts. So this is something that, I don't know if really anybody even knew we had them. So we now have them. They are installed at every single building at exterior doors. So if a door is left ajar, we get a notification. So how it works is the administrative assistant will get that notification. They will call out the building head and say, hey, there's a door, second grade wing, or whatever, it's, it's a jar. That building head will then go and make sure it's closed. So that is on all exterior doors at all buildings. Roof access. So this is another one that we've been working on. So as you can see, we need, we have quite a bit of solar panels on our roofs. So we need to make sure that there's a tie-offs for our guys to go up and work on the roofs, so they don't fall off. So we're basically working with the architect and putting tie-offs on all the roofs. So when they go up to work on the equipment, like that upwards picture is the Barton building. There's a couple pieces of equipment that fall within the six-foot range, so they need to be tied off if they're gonna work on that piece of equipment. So we're working on that. We have a lot of ladders. As you can see, the one to the left, that's our middle school with the extension ladders going up. That's a no-no. So we're trying to get all that taken care of with new ladders and telescoping rods coming out of the telescoping rods only gonna be at the Barton building. That's when you come through the roof hatch, there's a little rod you can lift up to help you get up on the ladder. And then we're also working with a solar panel company to relocate some of these panels. So in the project, we're taking all these roofs off. So in order to do that, we need to remove the solar panels. So what we wanted to do is work with a solar panel consultant and put these solar panels back on in a way that benefits us and our workers, so they can get to all these pieces of equipment without putting themselves in jeopardy. Safety toolbox talks, something else that we've talked about. I have like over fifty of these toolbox talks. It's basically a five-minute conversation. Uh, that you go and you sit, and it just helps prevent injuries. So for instance, we did one at the middle school on electrical cords. The cord was pretty frayed. So, you know, I saw that, I did timeout, stop, get that cord out of here, and then I brought my, um, a couple of the safety committee with me. We did a quick toolbox talk with that maintenance person. You know, this to give them, hey, you know, we need to look at this, look at that, et cetera. So like I said, I have over fifty of these. I have electrical, slip and falls, you name it, I have it. So something that the safety committee and myself are gonna be working on together to present most of more of these. Playground inspections. So this is something else that we've been doing. So we've been doing daily playground inspections with our buildings and grounds crew. So today during our safety committee meeting, we get a playground inspection. So we all met at the elementary school playground. We all had our slip of paper. We all walked around, see if anything that we could find that was wrong or that should be taken out of service. We did find one piece that needs to be taken out of service. So I'll get with Dan, we'll get that taken out and get that resolved. And then basically, I went to safety committee to help out with the buildings and grounds. They do it daily, so I'd like, uh, the committee to do it maybe monthly, just to go double-check. Just some future safety items that we're working on, we have the capital project. So we're gonna do all the public address improvements at the intermediate and elementary school. So all the PA will be replaced. Roof access at the middle school. So that one, we have a hard time getting on that roof. So we had those extension ladders. We wanna get rid of those. We have some roof hatches that are pretty dangerous. We don't want our guys using those roof hatches anymore. So now we're gonna cut doors in on the second floor to get us onto the roofs. So we're already in the process of working on that. And then again, improve the paw protection at all roofs. Make sure all our guys are tied off as they're working on the equipment. And then playground safety. So after we did the playground inspection, we, actually, the insurance company came by and invested the playground for us. We had to add a little bit more mulch, where that, you know, the compaction and things like that. So we're all good with those, and then we're gonna be replacing the playground at the Barton building with a newer one. Some other things that, uh, we gotta put on our plate is off-site evacuation. So I believe tonight, we're gonna hopefully approve that MOU with Adaranda Community College. That if there's a, if we need to evacuate Queensberry, we can go to Adaranda Community College. So I would like to do that little trip with everybody once we get going in with this flow of thing of school. So all the principals, assistant principals know where we have to go. Lockdown drills, another thing I'd like to work on. You know, we all know how to do lockdown drills in the classroom, but do we know what to do during recess? Do we know what to do during lunch? So I just wanna make sure that everybody's all on the same page. That's it, questions? Let's quit.
We're having questions? Excellent.
Awesome, thank you.
I don't like to talk about safety, but, uh, the next is a really a great, uh, presentation. Each year, we look forward to the, uh, opening day reports from our administrators and building leaders. And, uh, we're gonna do that tonight, and, uh, I hope they're all gonna start with the youngest and go to the oldest, is that okay, everyone? So we'll start. Think of both leaders. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. It's, uh, my pleasure to kind of kick things off, starting with the high school. I'm happy to report that everyone is back and the building is full. I'm done.
Yeah, now seriously, I have a lot of people to thank. Um, as you saw in the Friday report, we always have families transfer in, we have families transfer out. Our net gain, uh, almost every summer is about the same between fifteen and twenty new families. Uh, the enrollments are really interesting. Our senior cohort is the largest. Uh, grades ten and eleven are a little bit lower in the two forties. Uh, but I wanna start off by thanking the reopening task force. Um, I don't think that we ever stopped meeting. We have a district reopening task force, and each building has a reopening task force, and they really work hard. They do a stellar job. Uh, we love to meet, and, uh, there's, all of their hard work is keeping us Spartan safe, as we like to say. Uh, the masks and the physical distancing are still part of our culture. Uh, students and staff have been great in following Spartan safe guidelines. Um, the I protect you, you protect me is still part of our culture. Really happy about that. Um, when students arrive in the morning, we have areas where they wait until the warning bell rings. Uh, we really like putting the classes together. It's safer, better for supervision, and, uh, helps to mitigate the spread. Um, so the, the high school was a very busy place over the summer. Uh, we hosted, uh, music summer camps and summer school programs. I wanted to start off by thanking, um, Dan Hamm and Andy Snide for being the regional summer school principals, because we hosted not only our own students, but we hosted students from across the region, and they did a stellar job, uh, supervising that and everything from registering to the grade reports to the transcripts. Uh, they did a lot of heavy lifting and, uh, really thankful for that. I'd like to give a shout out to our twelve-month support staff. Um, they always do an excellent job, and we appreciate everything that we do, everything that they do. Um, Eric Wright and the custodial staff at the high school did a stellar job cleaning, sanitizing the building. Um, it always shines so well, uh, when we welcome all the students back in September, uh, so we're really thankful for their efforts. Um, I do have a lot of people to thank, so on behalf of all of the administrators and supervisors, um, I'll try not to leave any, anybody out. John Lutheringer in the tech department, uh, we hosted a Chromebook distribution for the freshmen. We did that before the start of school. We like to call it the Chromebook drive-by, and, uh, we did that two afternoons, uh, to distribute brand-new Chromebooks to the, to the freshmen. Same Chromebooks that they'll have throughout all four years of high school. Uh, I wanna give a shout out to Lee Rounds and, uh, his crew. The campus looks great. Uh, it's beautiful, as you can see, and, uh, really pleased with his crew and their efforts. Um, our traffic patterns are working well. After our, uh, capital project, the traffic flow has improved tremendously. Um, we've noticed an increase in the number of parent drop-offs, and, uh, we're always looking to tweak and adjust, and each day, we've noticed an improvement. Traffic is flowing better and better. A lot of it is teaching the new high school parents how to drop off properly in the queue, uh, but they're getting the hang of it, so we're pleased about that. Most of our, um, orientation and opening school programs return to in-person, so that was a nice, uh, shift. Uh, on a side note, our, our staff, the high school staff completed over four hundred hours of documented, uh, summer curriculum work. Um, so we're, that's an outstanding effort. Really pleased with that. Um, so we're, that's an outstanding effort, really pleased with that. Um, I already mentioned the, uh, Chromebook distribution day for the freshmen. Um, we hosted our annual student leader luncheon for all the elected student leaders. Um, we did that in person for the upperclassmen and virtual for grades nine and 10. Um, had a huge turnout and the student senate always, um, hosts its first student senate meeting of the year. I think they have their second one tomorrow. Uh, believe it or not, it's, it's time to, uh, start planning for, uh, for Spirit Week in October. Uh, so we're excited about that. I have to say, when the student leaders were here, their excitement to return to full in-person instruction, that excitement was palpable. Our kids are also really excited about the return of all athletics and all extracurricular activities. Uh, so we're, um, that enthusiasm that really, uh, is palpable and keeps us all, all motivated for sure. We ran our freshman orientation, freshman new student orientation in person. Uh, happy to be back in person, had a huge turnout. I would say a little over a hundred students came out for that. Um, and I'd like to thank the, uh, upperclassmen, our, uh, the, uh, senior athletes from the cross country team, field hockey, soccer teams, uh, those are the upperclassmen that, that lead the tours throughout the building. Uh, we passed out ice cream and we ended that event with a club activity fair. So the administrative team, instead of doing, uh, in-person assemblies, we did keep our welcome back assemblies virtual. Uh, was something that the homeroom teachers could play, uh, during homeroom. But we always review safety protocols and procedures, our expectations for a successful school year and, uh, reiterated the, uh, the code of conduct and all the Spartan, uh, Spartan safe protocols. Um, I also want to thank, uh, the transportation department, Sherry Martindale and Shagman, uh, always do an outstanding job. Um, I know it's tough to organize transportation for the district, but, um, I think things are flowing really well at the high school. And, um, I already thanked building, buildings and grounds. Uh, special shout out to Dan Miller and John Dawes. Uh, they're excellent. They're such worker bees. They're on top of everything. So really appreciate their efforts. Uh, so again, everyone is back and the building is full and we're psyched. Thank you.
I have a question to answer. This probably will take a little while. All right. So the choir, the community, they are required.
Thank you, Mr. Switzer. I'd like to echo the sentiments of gratitude to all those who have made this summer extraordinary success for the district and a fantastic fall. We're off to a great start at Queensberry Middle School, starting back in the midsummer. Um, we picked back up with our weekly Friday family memos, uh, emails out to our families, letting them know about, uh, events and happenings that were coming up over the summer. Schedules were mailed out, uh, around mid-August, late August, hit mailboxes. The week before we had our open doors program, which was a huge success. Families came in, navigated the building, learned their children's schedules and safely explored all the, the middle school hotspots. Um, we welcomed dozens of new families to the district in QMS at our new QMS family orientation on September 1st. Um, and as of this morning, uh, counts, we've welcomed 39 new middle school students. While 27 middle school students have transferred out, resulting in a kind of a net game of 12 additional families coming to QMS this year, which puts us at about a 750 or so students, uh, building wide. Our superintendent's conference days were, were filled with faculty and staff working collaboratively to, to strengthen our Spartan pride. Developing opening day activities centered on preparation, respect, integrity, dedication and engagement. Uh, the pride acronym that we, we live at Queensberry Middle School. We also had our, uh, held our start at the middle orientation program for our sixth graders, welcoming them to QMS. We held a gathering outside for a general assembly, followed by a scavenger hunt to find all the important QMS events. Oh, and there were also some obstacles to that, uh, but we had a wonderful turnout for that as well. Um, and then students entered on September 9th. You know, they spent the entire day partnered with, uh, with another guide room, working on team building and relationship building activities. We termed the first two days, September 9th and September 10th as, uh, of school as a soft opening, uh, which we developed through our multiple, multi-tiered assistance and support teams. A team of teachers and administrators that worked hard over the summer to develop programs. And I'm going to turn things over to our director of social emotional learning, Rachel Marshall, to describe some of those activities over the course of those two days.
I can't thank the MTSS team and our administration at QMS enough for their hard work over the summer, putting together those first two days very thoughtfully for all of our students. During the soft opening, our students and staff engaged in many activities, including tours of our media center. Students were able to meet our media specialists and learn about different opportunities available in the media center. At the help desk station, students learned how to get help should something happen with their Chromebooks. In PE, there was a low ropes course encouraging problem solving and team building. The students were able to visit the community bus and engage in more team building activities as well as some STEM activities. In the cafeteria, students learned their expectations and also what the different options are each day. Students were taught about the rules and importance of safety at post lunch recess as well. All students were given tours of the building as well as opportunities to learn about clubs and activities that are offered at QMS. In the orchestra room, they were able to play Beach Shazam. In the gym, students participated in a mindfulness meditation led by Mrs. Angela G., one of our parents. There were sessions on goal setting and students completed goal setting activities as well. And in our town hall pep rally, student learned about Spartan pride, preparation, respect, integrity, dedication, engagement, with a heavy focus on preparation for the beginning of the school year. All students were also given Spartan pride stickers that they could put on their water bottles, their Chromebooks or something, if they would like to decorate their items. Then on September 10th, we designed a schedule that these students threw their entire schedule, offering an opportunity for them to meet their teachers and talk about classroom climate, culture and community. The day was focused on preparation, the P and Spartan pride. And students were also invited to participate in icebreaker activities with their teachers that were focused on relationship building and getting to know one another. At QMS, we will continue to build programs and services to support the wellbeing of our students and staff. In fact, we have given all staff their very own Spartan pride shirt and implemented our Spartan pride blue and gold Fridays, which we already started on Friday. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, we had a great opening at the WHBI. It started this summer with some work that we've been doing. A huge thank you, um, to Dan Miller and Lee Rounds and six of our WHBI students for creating our beautiful new outdoor classroom. I know Dawn and Jamie got to visit it, uh, a few weeks ago. We are really excited that the classes have already been out there utilizing it. Another opportunity for them to get out and enjoy the outdoors. As well as our new PLR basketball court. I know Mr. Widdmore and Mrs. Scholz saw it firsthand. The first day of school, students were out there. We have post lunch recess and we're really increasing our post lunch recess time this year. For once students are finished eating, they can go outside, now they can play basketball, horseware, frisbees, color with chalk. Really getting, um, getting the wiggles and jiggles out, um, with lunch so that they can go back and have a great end of the day. Um, so those are two huge things that happened at the WHBI this summer. We rang the bell on last Thursday morning. It was 21 minutes long. It was five minutes longer than last year. We welcomed 25, uh, over 25 new students, which is an increase of 10 students from the year before. We had a terrific turnout at our meet and greet. We did an outside meet and greet this year. And it's such a great opportunity for our students to put a face to a name, get to know not only their teacher, but their part, uh, their, um, switch teacher as well. Just the dedication that all of our teachers and staff have during the summer to make those connections with their students. They continue to go above and beyond. Our opening days, like the other buildings are built on relationship building, getting to know each other and having fun, going outside. Um, we also started at the end of last year, we call it Barton's Book Walk. We have 13 different stations along our Queensberry cross country trails where classes go. They start to read a book, they stop, have discussion questions and they move on to the next one. So we strategically had a book, one of my favorite children, uh, read aloud is called The Invisible Boy by Trudy Ludwig. And it is about how we can make everyone in this world feel visible. And how do we help those, those students that do feel invisible? We don't want that to happen with our WHBI family. So every class is required to go out and do the book walk trail throughout the month of September. We also kicked off our first Spartitude Assembly, uh, remote, uh, virtually. Mrs. Dano and myself created our welcome back video. But new this year is that we are really focusing on our weekly themes with introducing children's books that follow along with our FCL weekly themes. So we read out loud to, through the video, The Day You Begin, which is a wonderful, wonderful children's book that focuses on all of our differences, but how we can all find commonalities with each other. I'm so appreciative of all of our teachers or staff and their dedication to spending countless hours getting the building ready. The highlight for me though, was seeing students back in the practice area. Seeing that normalcy, that volume, that interaction really made our day that first day to just see them back to some sort of normalcy. So we look forward to a great school year.
Good evening, everyone. So our youngest learners in K three have been quite busy. Really kicking it off with our superintendent conference days. And I know everybody recognizes how important those two days really are for our staff, um, to really prepare for the school year. Obviously preparations started this summer. We had a team that was getting ready, um, both procedural wise as well as the building, um, the building itself. I know Mr. Switzer talked and thanked everybody on behalf of our unit. But I'll just give another shout out to our buildings and grounds and our custodial staff. They measured and, and rearranged desks and stored furniture and then took furniture out of storage for us. We kind of looked at different opportunities to make the classrooms as, as traditional and as, as kind of back to normal as possible for our kids. So a big thanks, um, to Mr. Stockman and his staff. Mr. Miller was over there helping us set up the cafeteria. So big thanks to all of them. We are excited to welcome our staff back with our in-person faculty meeting. We haven't had one of those in over a year. So that was really exciting to be back together and have everybody in a spot really with a common purpose of welcoming our students back to a great school year. We joined, we had seven new teachers join us this year at QES. I know one is on the agenda for tonight, so we're glad she's here with us. And we really spent time being really intentional about reviewing this year's procedures with staff so they could understand, they could think through their own classroom procedures. As you know, at their elementary level, it's kind of, we, we have to train our students in those first couple of weeks. And that time to do that was really helpful. We also, it allowed our nurses and, um, our counselors to connect with all of our teachers to talk about any students with medical needs, any special circumstances that might need to be considered before those kids walk through those doors that all happened. We have a tremendous group of grade level nurses who lead each of their grade levels. And they spend, um, quite a bit of time with their grade levels, reviewing all the summer curriculum work that happened with all their students. And thinking through the curricular calendars for this upcoming school year. They also had a chance to look back. I know we shared with you in August, our data presentation from this year. So they had a chance to look back at that, look at the goals for this year and look at their incoming student data. So they could really be intentional with their, their curriculum planning ahead. We had 227 kindergartners come to us this year, which is, is increased by 33 students from last year. So we had, and that's pretty common. If you look at the news across the nation, we had a big kindergarten population this year. So a big thanks again to, um, it really was a district effort from Annette Bremer, my secretary, to Lois Mellon over at our central registration process, um, Kat Zugel on her end. Um, transportation, everybody really came together. Our school nurses were pivotal in all of that in terms of registering all of these students and making sure they could walk through the doors for that first day. We've been really intentional these last couple of years when we couldn't hold last year, we could not hold our kindergarten roundup traditionally. Um, this year we were able to do that. So we were glad to welcome all our students in person. But our counselors, uh, made it a point to reach out to all preschools ahead of the students coming to us during that COVID year. And we carried that on this year. So we were able to talk to each local preschool, go through the students that were coming to us and be really mindful of what our students' needs were before they, they walked in. We've also put a lot of transition supports in place for kindergarten this year, knowing that many of these students may not have had a preschool experience that was pretty typical. So we've been really intentional in terms of planning for them to be supported. So beyond that, we had 871 students, um, start with us. Again, kindergarten being one of the higher grades and third grade being one of the higher grades. With us first and second grade were about just over 200 and kindergarten, third grade were closer to 230 students. This summer, we were able to welcome 43 new students to our in-person student orientation, which is really important for our families to be able to come in the buildings, walk the buildings, see where the kids will be. And we could really give them an appropriate welcome to Queensberry. Um, during those opening days for students, um, we were really excited to be able to offer 75 backpacks. The United Way, Neymar Ford and the Post Star have an incredible backpack program that they've been able to support us with each year. And these backpacks are beautiful, name brand map backpacks that the students are gifted along with a full set of supplies for them, um, to really walk through the door feeling confident and much like everybody else. Like the WHBI, we had peak and greets, um, the day before school started. And it was a nice opportunity for those kids to connect with their teachers, get any of those nerves out so they could see that smiling, welcoming face and know that that first day was going to be a great one. We invited our kindergarten families to walk in the building and have a traditional meet and greet right in the classroom. We were able to limit the number of students at a time so the teachers could spend 10 minutes with a couple of families at a time to welcome them, help the kids see where they needed to go that first day to really again, be intentional with that transition. Um, the first couple of days, really things went very smoothly. We had a lot of new traffic patterns and a big thanks again to all of our staff who's out, um, helping making sure that the traffic flow is going as well as our staff who helped make sure that all of our little ones make their way to the right classroom. That's always our challenge those first couple of days. Um, and we're proud to say our, due to all the planning, we've been able to extend our instructional day. Last year we had to really cut back because of parent pickups, but to come back on some of the instructional time. And we were able to really think through the processes to buy back about 25 minutes of our instructional time at the end of the day, which was huge. Um, we have really transitioned our morning announcements, um, from a morning announcements to a morning show, thanks to Kristen Bergen. She really puts on a good show. Um, and through that morning show, we really had a focus on wellness and social emotional learning. Rachel Marshall came on the announcements on Friday and we have all these guest speakers come on. And of course today we started to highlight our PBS superheroes. So our students are excited, they're hunting the building for their superheroes. Um, the cafeteria is abuzz. We were really, like Lynn said, it's really fun to go through the cafeteria, filled with kids safely sitting there. Incredible, their ability to sit, wear masks. So they're eating, they're wearing masks, they're socializing, really typically, um, back to where we used to be. My favorite line in kindergarten, you can always, um, know you'll get a good laugh from a kindergarten. I was in lunch today and I was in Michelle LaFasciano's classes in front of me and this little guy, it was about one o'clock. He goes, you know, my mom's expecting me home right now. And so, you know, it just goes to show, you know, these are long days, but our kids are happy. Um, our teachers are doing an incredible job. So they've done, did a lot of planning to get to this point. We're really proud of all the work that they've been able to do and really remain student focused, um, during this whole time. So we're excited this week, we're actually holding a virtual open house on Wednesday and Thursday. So we'll have more information for parents on that. So thank you for this opportunity.
Oh, we are next, the administrator, I was at the campus that afternoon before school started. And, uh, the open house for QES and WHCI, it was packed. I mean, there wasn't a space on the sidewalk to walk anymore. The Park is bound still, it was absolutely a mob. Just to show how excited people were, how many people participated, come back and see the school and their teachers and whatnot. Just feeling a little bit of enthusiasm, yeah. Part of the community, parents, so. You have, you want, you want to come out?
I think I spoke enough with the community boss, but, uh, good evening, everyone. Just to give you a little update from the technology department, we cover a lot of ground in the summer. This is some of our busiest time of year going into the school year. It ranges from technical work to physical work, to hands-on building. As you can see, uh, we do a lot of rolling over of programs like school tool and frontline so we can be ready to go for the start of the school year. Um, one of the biggest projects we had this summer was transitioning the last building on campus to Chromebooks. So our middle school, um, is now, all of our teachers are using Chromebooks. So it's the last building on campus to transition to that. It helps keep us more secure, uh, prevents cyber, uh, from a cybersecurity perspective. It also allows more flexibility from, uh, teaching perspective as well. Uh, so far I have heard from the strand again, things have gone pretty smoothly. A big thanks to our lighthouse teachers in the middle school and, and throughout campus, helping our teachers transition back. It's been really actually kind of eerily smooth. Um, we do have, um, our tech team has really been integral in that. As I mentioned, we also unboxed and deployed over a thousand Chromebooks this summer. Um, just about 800 or so to our students. just about 800 or so to our students. And then we had three buildings of our replacement plan also for our teachers. And three of our buildings also received new Chromebooks. So that was a huge undertaking to unbox and deploy them and get them ready. We also supported summer school, as you mentioned, as mentioned before, we had a lot of different needs for summer school. We had many, many students coming from all over the regions. We had issued them Chromebooks as well and make sure that our regional summer school teachers were prepared to teach each day. And so since September 1st, so just a couple of facts, we've cleared 202 tickets. But keeping things in perspective, last year we processed 3,499 support tickets for our school. So this is a really great department. It's a small team, but we work hard every single day and it really couldn't be done without Bernie, Joe, Dan, our newest employee Jessica and Kat Zubel for their tireless efforts. They work hard every single day to make sure our kids can learn and our teachers can teach. And just finally, another piece of the puzzle with technology is we offer lots of professional development for our teachers and staff throughout the school year or without the summer. And it culminates with our big tech summit each summer. And we had, which is kind of our pinnacle PD, we had 116 teachers participating in over 23 different sessions on the course of a day. We had 16 different teachers present. And then with the tech summit, we had over 45 different offerings for technology professional development for our teachers. So topics range from tech tools, instructional practices, sound pedagogy, going paperless, all sorts of different things. And then when I wasn't doing all of that, I was rolling my sleeves up and getting myself dirty on the community bus building. So a lot going on, but it actually, it's been a very smooth opening and a big thanks to everyone that's helped with that. So thank you.
A race to the mic. Welcome, everyone. So I would like to start with what you've already heard a number of times tonight, and that is how exciting it is to have all our students back on campus. It's just, is that better? Okay. How exciting is to have all our students back on campus now? And the special ed department is welcoming six new teachers within the district. And really, it's wonderful to walk through each one of the buildings and see all the work that was done prior to school starting, to have classrooms up and running and ready to go. And with that, I would say some of our, a number of our teachers this summer participated in professional development, connected to co-teaching, progress monitoring on I E Ps, and also specialized reading. So really, Orton-Gillingham-based programs for some of our students that really require something a little bit different. This year, we have 497 students receiving some type of special education services within the district. We had, we have 17 new students coming into our district and 23 that actually transferred out. So we have a little bit of a downfall where usually it's about the same. At Queensberry Elementary, we have a total of 126 students that are going to be receiving special education services. 55 of those students receive services within special classes. The remainder of them get all their services within the general ed classroom. Of those students, we have 102 students at that level that receive either one or more related services at the elementary level. At WHBI, we have 65 students receiving services this year under I E Ps. 23 of those students are within special classes. The remainder of them were servicing within the gen ed classrooms. And 28 of those received one or more related services. At the middle school, a course with more students and they're a little bit older, we have 120 students receiving services. 34 of those within special classes, the remainder of them all within gen ed. And 35 of those receive related service. I think one pattern that you'll see is as students get older, they require less. And it really shows that the providers are doing what they need to do as, as the students get older. And then at the high school, 162 students with 44 receiving services in special class, all the rest in gen ed, and 37 of those with related service. We have a decrease in our out of district students this year. We have a total of 24. 18 of those students go to day programs. That could be BOSI's or some of our private schools in the Albany area, and they're transported back and forth every day. And then we do have currently six students in some type of residential program with one of those students out of state. And then the only other area I typically report on is our preschool services. And we do have 50 students currently receiving preschool services. Of those 50 students, 17 of those received some type of special class in the area. The rest of them, there's 33 of them that just got related services only, but really looking forward to an exciting year. And again, it's wonderful to have them all back on campus. So thank you for all you've done to make that happen.
Only once. Good evening. Thank you, Board of Education. I'd like to report out on our athletics program to date. As you know, we began our high school athletic program on August 23rd, so we're starting our fourth week of our programs. I'm pleased to say that we've been very successful to date. September 7th was the start of our modified program over at the middle school. So at the conclusion of this week, we should have some final roster numbers for the teams there. There are still starting, still have some individuals who are signing up. We purposely made a conscious effort within the Full Hill Council to start modified sports at the start of school year because we didn't want some students showing up a week into the season like we have in years past, feel like they've missed too much in order to go out and participate. And it was a conscious effort to try and increase our participation numbers and provide equity amongst all of our students for participation. Leading into this, this coming fall, this summer, we participated in a strength and conditioning program at grades four through 12, which serviced 164 students district-wide. We're very happy with that program and its initial year. The concern was to re-acclimate a lot of our students who may have not participated physically over the last past 12 to 15 months. And we feel it was, it was very successful as we, as we transitioned into this year. So to start our, our high school sports, 320 student athletes, over 17 teams are competing and participating in a full complement of sports teams here at Queensberry. Not everyone in our league is as fortunate for that. There are several schools within the Full Hill Council where their programs are down in numbers and their teams are fewer. There are several teams that are unable to field JV teams or a second modified team or even a varsity program in some particular sports. We're approximately 5 to 10% down in numbers in certain sports. But again, it's positive to know that this is a trend across the region. And with that, we're still able to provide all that we offer. As I mentioned, modified numbers will be finalized this coming week. A number of schools are dealing with transportation issues. We're not alone in that matter. Our district is doing a phenomenal job of accommodating our needs in the area of athletics. Again, other schools within the Full Hill Council and within Section Two are not as fortunate in that. We've had two contests canceled this week at the JV level because visiting schools were not able to provide transportation. One of those days, the only team that was going out was the team that was, that was canceled from coming here. That's how dire the transportation needs are in other districts. So if a game is canceled on a last minute, today JV girl soccer with Scotia was postponed. It's really day to day in the transportation department because if one driver calls in sick and unable to work, it has a trickle down effect and really is impacting the ability to provide transportation to these, to visiting contests. I'm proud to say that we embarked on our first captains club meeting. Mr. Gannon and I presented, and we had about 40 team captains over those 17 teams meet with us. We had great conversations to start off the year, talking about goal setting and how to go about doing that, as well as talking about the skills that they would like to achieve through our captains club to develop their leadership and translate that to their teammates and to their, to their teams throughout the season. As I mentioned before, transportation, buildings and grounds, our coaching staff and our parents and community members have just been outstanding in doing everything in their power to provide the appropriate documentation for our student athletes to be able to get out there and participate to the fullest extent possible, establishing those protocols, keeping our program safe and going. I don't want to jinx this. We're doing well, so I'm not going to comment any further. But it's great to see people on campus. As you've mentioned, we had about 2,500 people at the varsity football game at Shenandoah on Friday night. And out at the girls soccer game today, it was just great to see stands on the other side of the field, pretty, pretty full with no limitations on the number of people who can come and observe our contest. So thanks to everyone, and we're off to a great start.
Have been here long enough. Rich Keys always used to run to the sweet spot. So I just want to take this opportunity to go over real quick what transportation has been up to. We never stop. It seems as though we go from one to the other, to summer school, to all our training and food service and repressur courses and classes that we have to take. We, the drivers have all received their initial PAX training. That's going to continue throughout the year. And I'm looking forward to working with them with that and just to help. What PAX kind of is real briefly is just getting the drivers to try to work with students to self-control, self-regulate, and student management types. And it's beneficial for, for everybody, drivers as well as students. So currently, we are, as of today, transporting roughly 2,300 students in and out to school, to over 20 different schools throughout the district and the campus district and things like that. As Rich has said, we are short drivers. It's not just Queensberry. It's a national shortage. If you could, there's a lot of rules and regulations that drivers have to commit to. And dealing with students other than in a classroom environment can be challenging. So that's a lot of it, too. There's a lot of restrictions put on drivers and things that they can and cannot do, which makes it hard to fill those positions. But we are, I am, I'm teaming up with my local association in the capital area, NIAAP. We are having a test drive, drive the bus type day. It's on the October 14th. And we're actually going to use the community bus to do interviews, job interviews for that. So it's on kind of like a little job fair as it's done through support through all the districts. So it's going to be the same day for all the schools that have signed up, and it's October 14th. So if anybody knows anybody who would like to become a driver or an aide, please, you know, have, feel free to call us. It is a truly rewarding career. I've been doing it for 27 years and just, you know, it is when you, when you have a little kid who wants you to tie your sneakers all the way up through to college and, you know, sending them off and athletics and sports. And you get to see them with their, you know, when you follow a student, it's really the tremendous, it's like a teacher, you're a teacher. So what else do I have for you? Like I said, the community bus. Just the second day of school went amazingly well. The first day, we had to kind of tweak some things. We all sat down as administrative team, we worked together. And the next day, second day of school went fabulous. The kids were out on time. And I have a great support staff that I want to thank, and Chad, and Stacy, Tanya, all those. And we also worked closely with Kat Zubel over the summer and stuff, initiating a updated version of Transfinder. It's now Transfinder Plus, which integrates with the school tool. So we changed roughly, I would say, 1,000 students were added onto transportation. So we've done a lot of work over, over that, over the summer and getting everybody back to school. And then changes every day, you know, things change, circumstances change, and we have to go with the ups and flows of, of transportation. And it was nice to see campus alive again, you know, when I come back, it was like, there's kids here, you know? And it's really just nice to see them getting off the buses and, you know, looking for their drivers. And it was great. It's great to have everybody back. So, thank you.
Really quick, we had a job five for the school lunch for our president here. The school lunch program is also really good success as well. This year, we continue the free breakfasts and free lunches that the U S D has pushed out, so that's a lot of staff more participation. First, we're very good about allowing the breakfast in class, to have breakfast in class, building pretty much all the buildings. And it's, it's been great participation play out. We see a high need for this thing, great to get that started. I see my board agenda for dinner, continuing the hard school grant, so they will, that's exciting. We're fine, I was a big, stated, the awful students snack in the afternoon. A lot of success out of it. Any questions or members for the president to say for the speaking? Other information. So we're getting to the point of open forum, and I just have a couple of things to read. We have a public participation policy that was put on the books in 1996. And just to review it briefly for everyone. The Board of Education recognizes its responsibility to hear and respond to public comment and therefore encourages public participation at Board of Education meetings. There will be two specific open forums, each regular meeting, to provide opportunities to address the Board of Education. Assigning sheet will be available as long guests, speakers can sign in, provide their names, telephone numbers, and current address. This personal information will be used by the Board of Education to deliver a response to the speaker if warranted. Residents of the Queensberry Union Preschool District will be the only guests invited to present faces to the Board of Education. Under special circumstances, the Board of Education can waive this residential requirement. Persons wishing to speak need to adhere to the following protocol. Speakers first need to sign in and then be recognized by the Board of Education President. They must identify themselves, any organization they may be representing at the meeting, and the agenda topic they wish to discuss. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and relate to school matters. As such, each speaker will be limited to a stated time of three minutes. Additionally, before anyone individual is allowed to speak a second time, every guest is arrogant to ask to address the Board of Education must be permitted to speak once. This time period may not exceed 30 minutes. The time limit openings may be waived via majority vote by the Board of Education. All speakers are to guard themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. President is responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting and shall rule on such matters as the time to be allowed of public discussion. Appropriateness of the subjects being presented and suitability of the time for such presentation. Board of Education as a whole should have a final decision determining the appropriate set of rulings. But our agenda, there will be two open forums at each regular meeting of the Board of Education, meaning to provide opportunities to address the board of that. We ask participants who wish to speak during the first open forum to identify themselves and conflict with the organization they're representing. We're going to be asked all speakers to identify the school-related matter, topic to be discussed in order to conduct district business in a smooth, orderly, timely manner. Open forum is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes, but three minutes allocated each speaker. We appreciate the public attendance and participation at our meetings. Again, I've reminded the folks before, it's not a question and answer session. If there is a topic or a question that needs to be addressed, it will be written down and addressed by the appropriate faculty association member or minister. That first, Chris Behr.
Chris Behr, Queensberry Middle School, father. I'm going to, I want, I've actually, first of all, I thank you for saying the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The National Archive now has trigger warnings for the Constitution. So when that becomes hate speech, I hope you continue that. When you look at the level of virus and the nasopharynx of a vaccinated person who gets a breakthrough infection with Delta, it is exactly the same as the level of virus in an unvaccinated person who's infected. That's the problem. So those data are very compelling. That's Dr. Tony Fauci on July 31st of this year. That's the problem. So those data are very compelling. That's Dr. Tony Fauci on July 31st of this year. I hope we consider that science as we move forward, and you have faculty who now are either vaccinated and opt out of weekly testing, and unvaccinated who are being forced to do weekly testing. Even though vaccinated, according to the director of the NIH, the vaccinated can spread this deadly disease to every other man, woman, and child in this district. They can't, according to the science. I think the board should consider a position on that, because we're only attacking that unvaccinated people with the testing. I do think, according to the science, you should consider testing everybody to keep our children safe. I will say, I don't have as much as I did last time, and I will specifically, here's what I'll tell you, I don't know. There's a lot of unfortunate events that can really easily be avoided by, if you make a vote and create a policy on masks, then people will wear masks, no problem. Instead of being escorted out, being charged with trespassing, you didn't do anything wrong, Mr. Ward was just asked to leave or to be charged with trespassing. It's not illegal to not wear a mask in here. It's also not against policy. I believe you should consider taking the stance and making policy, but more important, here's the one thing I would like to ask you guys, okay, please. There are parents with growing anxiety and faculty members who are terrified in every building that you have here. Everyone's afraid to say anything because they're afraid to lose their livelihood. People need to hear that our children are going to have a chance at living a normal childhood, like everyone in this room was allowed to have, every one of us was, but they are not. And even if you just communicate some expectations that our goal is not just to be back in school with muzzles on every day. Our goal is back to full, normal, everyday life for every child, for every adult who chooses to. If you choose to wear a mask, that's up to you. It's been three months as of next week since disgraced Governor Andrew Cuomo ended the state of emergency in New York State. I do believe, I only know two of you personally, and I think you're very good men, and I respect both of you. And so I presume the rest of you also are. I ask that you consider, as a board, managing some expectations that some, it's not just forever wearing masks in this new dystopian, new normal. Thank you.
Next name is, I'm sorry, Steve. Read your last name, if you're from Lubbock, Pittsburgh. Not here? Anyone else wish to speak in open forum? All right. This is, just one more. Recommend the board group item A, motion to accept the resignation for retiring focuses of student college bus drivers, due appreciation regret, page 9, 3,000. Motion, please. Second? Any discussion on motion? During non-all, favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Sorry, Pat?
Yes, I'm here.
How do you vote?
I voted yes. I thought I saw his name up there.
Okay, I thought we did, I'm sure we lost it. Recommend the board group item B, motion approved by resolution. The resolution related to the secret action related to the emergency project related to the hot water heater system. Have a motion, please. Any discussion on the motion?
Aye.
Let's take a banner.
Aye.
Let's take clarity.
Aye.
Let's take hardest.
Aye.
Aye.
Let's take shade.
Aye.
Recommend the board group item C, motion approved by resolution related to the hot water heater project, Mr. Sullivan for school, and an emergency project identified by the state education department. Motion, please.
So moved, Pat?
Second? Any discussion on the motion? Some persons of the prior report. So I've got. Let's see, help them.
Aye.
Let's see, Blackbird. Let's see, Dan.
Aye.
Let's see, Claire.
Aye.
Let's see, Hardisty.
Aye.
Let's see, Mannix.
Aye.
Let's take shade.
Aye.
Recommend the board group item D, motion for the contract, contract number one, PMC contract, TS double five versus hot water heater, and TS product T, Pellet Incorporated, in cost $3,109. Motion, please. Next, second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on motion E? During non-all, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Recommend the board group item E, motion approved by the board of services for the birds, hot water heater project, who has CS or plus. Motion, please. Second?
Second, Pat?
Thank you, Pat. Any discussion on motion E? All favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Recommend, recommend the board business item, that motion approved by resolution related to the Cleveland Free School District, intended to clear itself, the agency, the capital project, 2020, 2021. Upcoming December. So. Thank you, David. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Brad. Yeah, to the point of the prior report, secret. Any other, any other discussion on the motion? Let's see, Bell.
Aye.
Let's see, Blackburn.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Let's see, Flare.
Aye.
Let's see, Hardisty.
Aye.
Let's see, Nance.
Aye.
Trust the shade.
Aye.
Recommend the board group, since item G. Or make a motion, or maybe anything to move prior to that. Motion approved, educational content items, G for GG, please. Second?
Second, Pat?
All favor, the business educational content items, G for GG.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any sanctions? Mr. David. Thank you, six minutes. Actually, item A, I recommend the board move to approve the following probationary appointment, Gaila Burner, to a four-year probationary appointment as Queensberry Elementary School Special Education. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Pat?
Any discussion on the motion? During non-all, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Y'all here? Item B, I recommend the board move to approve, approve the following probationary appointment, Amanda Christman, for a three-year probationary period as a WHBI Special Education. Have a motion, please? Second? Any discussion on the motion? During non-all, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Three passes. I recommend the board move to approve, actually, item C, the motion to approve the following probationary appointment of Christopher Hammond, to a four-year probationary position as Queensberry Middle School Guidance Council. Have a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
I'll give you the second. Any discussion on motion C? During non-all, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion C carries. Actually, item D, I recommend the board move to approve the following probationary appointment of Michael Purcell, as Queensberry Elementary School grade three teacher, with four-year probationary. Motion, please. Second? Any discussion on the motion? During non-all, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Speakers. Actually, item E, motion to approve the following probationary appointment of Taylor Shinkle, to a four-year probationary appointment as a Queensberry Middle School AIS reading teacher. Motion, please. Second?
Second.
Any discussion on motion E? During non-all, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Here is. Hi, Taylor. I recommend the board move to approve, actually, I'd ask, the motion to approve the following probationary appointment of Tyler Teacher, to a three-year probationary position as Queensberry Middle School Special Education. Motion, please. Thank you, boss. Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? During non-all, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? What did that carries? Teacher, on the board. Actually, item G, I recommend the board move to approve the following probationary appointment of Frederick Foster, to a four-year probationary position as a teaching assistant, Queensberry Middle School. Motion, please.
So moved.
Next, Pat, second?
Second.
Thank you, Brad. Any discussion on motion G? During non-all, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion G carries. Actually, item H, I recommend the board move to approve the following revised probationary appointment of Rachel Marcelle, to a four-year probationary position as the Director of SEL. Motion, please. Second? Any discussion on motion H? During non-all, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion H carries. Actually, item I, I recommend the board move to approve the following revised probationary appointment of Christopher Estamaro, to a four-year probationary position as a Queensberry High School. Motion, please. Thank you, Stacy, second?
Second. Doesn't matter.
Thank you. Any discussion on motion I? During non-all, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Which I carries. Actually, item J, I recommend the board move to approve the following long-term substitute teacher appointment of Megan Lambert. She should be for Queensberry Elementary School Special. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion on motion? During non-all, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Figures. Actually, item K, I recommend the board move to approve the attached district comprehensive improvement plan for the 2021-22 school year. Motion, please. Second?
Second.
Any discussion on motion K? During non-all, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? What you take here. I recommend the board move to approve the following educational consent items, it's L through B. Any board member need any of the items of L through B, for the discussion?
Yeah.
Seeing none, can I have a motion, please? Second? All favor of the official consent of L for BB, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Official consent items, L to BB carries. Say a revised motion of. I would recommend the board move to approve the consent agenda items, CC and DE, as, I apologize, BB. Motion, please. Thank you. Second? On favor of putting CC and DE in consent items, approval, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Here is. Board committee report. This afternoon, we did meet at the elementary school playground, did a quick inspection of all the equipments, approximately 1000. Safety. Safety. Sorry, safety. You know, so you met, Brad, you were there, or?
Oh, for the, yeah. You want me?
Sure, you want to add something to that?
Sure. We went down and looked at the pool in Mahanessen. Our pool has to be resurfaced, the deck, and we looked at different, different options that we could be doing to get it resurfaced. And then we took a look at three turf fields, one at Albany, one was at Mahanessen, and the other was just the, get the name replaced by the airport. Yeah. And then just got an idea of what pros and cons of all of them, what looks good, what doesn't look good. Got a lot of decisions to make before we decide exactly where we're going, not going there.
Also, discussing with media's staff at all the different facilities. Also, we're discussing with media staff at all the different facilities and schools about what what they maintain. Other areas, some more of the minutia in the pool area. Decisions had to be made, I guess, friends at the surfaceing, the maintenance of the surfaceing lighting. Saw two very different facilities between Mahonson and Albany, Albany being newer of the. So it was quite a bit to look at, consider other instructor personnel as well as John Dawes. With us for the guys that were doing the concrete, so had done construction. Had those facilities, gave us their opinions as well, so. It was very kind of.
No, it actually, CSR was with us, our textual firm, and. Really helped to bring a few issues to light that we've been wondering about against for the capital project, both December fourteenth. And one thing that we did realize that we we liked the tiled surface from homes much better than. Surface that had been sanded down at the Mahonson pools that solidified that for us. And also, we were able to feel the difference in textures and to see the settings that they were in. It made us realize, one thing's for sure. Through the job we do here, I'm actually able to view other people's grounds, they're nice, but ours is beautiful. Fortunate to have. I see care now. And we're looking forward to taking this forward to public and we have lots of rich keys and I have a strong communication plan. We have over twenty presentations for John Dawes and Scott around the community, we're going to go to all these programs, explain. What we're trying to set up here. And so there'll be plenty of public presentations as well. So for a strong December fourteen. Are you looking at that? For number comments. That comment on the. Amount of activity at campus is really so, so nice to see. That the day before school starts, campus in the background again is just full of kids and parents was really excited. You don't realize how much you miss it saying it. Over the weekend, again, different teams practicing using athletic fields, which are amazing condition. Thank you to all of those things, probably people involved in that activities. By the way, with cavity, you all get back to school. How long here? You have a second open forum? Would like to speak the same. Will supply a second open forum, per my own speed. Okay.
I have a question on the capital project. I know there's no dollar figure on it at this point in time. And when the dollar figure comes to it, will it have a tax impact? Go get back to you.
So I actually have a couple sports related questions, I've given up on asking you guys real questions because I didn't get any answers from the last time. But first, starting with the pool, so my daughter is one of the only divers, if we're going to spend all this money on the pool, why don't we? Get it diving ready for a real Queensberry dive team? So then I don't have to send them to Hudson Falls to dive, so. Spending lots of money on that, my second question is kind of towards Mr. Keys, I don't know if he knows the answer. High-risk sports, I got something secondhand that says. All students of high-risk sports are getting tested every week starting next week? What's that?
Wednesday.
So how come you didn't bring that up, that seems fairly important? Of course, so I just want to let you all know that every kid in high-risk sports is getting tested unlawfully every week. And God, I'd love to see where in paper you have the rights to test my kids. And I'd like to know if you're testing in winter sports so that I can pull on my kids' winter sports and play for private teams. So those are my questions to you.
You all wish to speak a second open forum, they all. Bring it outside.
Chris Barrett, please be a middle school father. As an addendum. You have first graders. Who have never known school, this is their, this is their second year of school, they've never known school without masks. I am a coach, I have personally witnessed them. Terrified to remove their mask outdoors by themselves when the adults around allow them to, they're terrified. So I understand that as we're interviewing to the paper, we can be really cavalier and say it's no big deal, it's just a mask. It is for us because we know life without it. They don't, their brains are being washed in the worst way possible, and I'll tell you what, if it means it saves their lives, let's do it, okay? If it means that they, if they may have a chance of dying or being hospitalized, mask them up and that's what we have to do. We can't keep walking around and saying it's, it's okay, it's no big deal. I'm telling you, talk to your elementary schoolers, it's bizarre what's happening to them and. I don't, I, I, I think, I'm afraid the ramifications that last throughout life, I don't, I can't imagine what my life would be like, could you? Could any of us picture if we grew up at any phase, imagine being a senior during this. Imagine being a third grader, I can't imagine any of this stuff, I can't imagine I'd be properly socialized, I don't understand. Like. And I understand you having terrible, I don't envy the position you guys are in, especially Mr. Gannon. I can't imagine, it's, it's a, it's a big weight to carry and I'm not envious of it. I do think if, if you guys consider acknowledging that there are some cons to what you're choosing to do to these children. And say, in spite of these obvious. Cons of doing this, we are still doing this and here's our goal to remove them or mitigate or whatever. I do think that'll go a long way because this, this, this forum where you have three minutes of rhetoric. Where you're able to close your ears and shut your eyes and turn your brain off to everything everybody says and just do whatever you're going to do and not communicate to anybody. It's creating a community of festering angry parents who. Maybe they didn't all show up today. I'm very concerned that we're going to see the town that I love, the school I went to, that I coach at, that I love this place, you know I do. I don't want to see a bunch of angry parents out here because we can just clearly manage expectations, tell them, hey, listen. We hear you, your feelings are valid because they are. It's, it's our children we're talking about. And here's what we plan to do, we don't, you guys don't know any better than we do, I know you don't. Who knows what next week's going to be, who knows what twenty twenty-two is going to look like? But if you at least said at some point our goal would like to be a normal school system. I think it would really go a long way to bridge the gap between some of these parents who are very upset right now, I really do. And I, I promise you, I'm absolutely on your side in this, and that's why I'm sitting here talking to you and not a part of the angry, festered parents. Trying to bring down this place, I'm. I think that we can do a little better in communication, and I hope you consider it, thank you.
I'll wish to speak for the second open forum. Saying none, there's a number of informational items that are back here. Pick a list of those if you're leisure and as many as you can. I don't commit, that's not, actually, if you have any for executive sessions tonight. So I have a motion to window executive session, please. Basically, thank you, second. Favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here is. Motion to go into executive session pursuant to section one oh eight, point three of the open meeting laws to discuss matters made covered by federal state law. While students pursuant to perp, and their client parties pursuant to section forty-five oh three of the New York Civil Rights Law rules. And motion to enter such to discuss the potential discipline of a particular person. Have a motion. Thank you all for attending, thank you all that line, appreciate you taking time out of your evening.